And we'll. One, two, three. Hard for me to see from this distance. But first, I'd like to thank you for entrusting me to provide data and guidance with the enrollment study and forecast and for the students at Stokes County. And I don't take this trust that you've given me with lightly. I know it's important and the students always come first. It's right there on the logo and so we need to consider as we go forward that these studies are pertaining to students and the directions we're going. Now, as we look forward, first, I'd like to say, I looked at tons and tons of data and years of data and other enrollment studies and gathered vital statistics, birth rates, facilities, Stokes staff gathered enrollment data, kindergarten, early college, facilities, facility surveys previously done in 91, 92, and '78. And the Stokes County government who gathered information and population densities. Now, all of those, once we get to thinking about them and put them together, I always like to look at multiple sources and multiple datas and to pull them together and then kind of like assembling a puzzle and you start getting one piece and then you bring another piece and you bring another piece. And I don't want just one set of data. I want two or three sets of data. So, all of these multiple datas get you two or three different kinds, different sources, different solutions. You get different information and trends in trying to find an alignment of trends and information. And if you get a lot of sources gathering and making sense and tying together, then you get a more solid end result. So, out of that, we've got a lot of solid end results in this. So, we're gonna, to get a forecast, we're gonna start with the kindergarten. And if you took the kindergarten class you have today, and that's one piece of data, but if you go back 20 years and you look at the trends, then you can start to say, well, how did they roll through classes? Then, we get at today's kindergarten and say, well, they're gonna be 10 to 13 years from now, they're gonna be in high school and they're gonna graduate. Now, those kids are in school. So, as we look at them, we're gonna rely a lot on that. So, we've got four factors. We've got county population, births, kindergarten, student enrollment, and tie them all together. Now, there's an important piece of that. In 2010 and 2020, the census tracked information. And you think, well, the census is out for 2020. Yes, it is. It does not have, published yet, and we've researched it to the state and the federals, and they have not sent out the population per census tract of those five years old and under. That would tell us where in the county they're located. That's huge. It also doesn't tell us from five to 17-year-olds, which is your current enrollment. Where is that enrollment located? So, we're a little bit in shortage of information for the future, in particular, elementary, the middle and high in 10 years. They're in school. They're in kindergarten. And in a minute, you'll see how they track through kindergarten. So, we're using all of those. So, let's start with the county and the data, and the purple lines being the trend. And so, you can see since 1975-ish and before that, Stokes County general population has grown, the blue line, and since 2010 to 2020, the overall Stokes population has dropped a couple of thousand in Stokes County as a whole. In this section, this came from the Stokes 2035 guide, and I use it several times, but at the bottom of that, it's almost impossible to read, the number of children or working age adults, 18 to 64, they are declining. And the, continue to decline, and they are declining faster than the population. Your population is aging. You can see the aging, 28% will be 65, and then it goes up from there. So, now, you, Stokes County has become an older population and the youth of the county is not growing as much as the older group. So, then, we look at Stokes County live births back from '73, and you roll down a fewer birth, this is per year, and you come out here to 1997 for the peak births. And then, the births have continued in a downward trend in the last few years, a little different. But if you follow that trend line and look at that 30-year trend line and say, how can I look to say, how many babies will there be in the county in the future? And we can't continue this 30-year trend because as you can see, if you continue it out here off the screen on the right, you're gonna come to there aren't gonna be any babies in Stokes County. But we're not gonna get there. But the last 10 years, you can see it went down pretty good and then it trended and it turned a little bit negative. It's not positive, it's a little negative. So, if we follow the 10-year trend, it's different. And traditionally, at the end of each 10-year period or thereabouts, you should reevaluate, has anything changed in the last 10 years? If you'd have thought back here in 10 years before at 2010, if you continued the trend, it would've, it would've rocketed down here. So, we've gotta evaluate our few years to see what's different. But that trend line, the purple one, let's get the slope of the purple one. And then, we have a slope of a 30-year trend on births. Same slope, peak, back here in '96, '97. And that continues forward. Now, you notice out here in the last 10 years, the births have somewhat leveled off if you follow this line out. So, now, we're gonna think about if we followed the 30-year trend and you think about the Hurricane cones and what is the forecast area and what is the variable that's possible? So, if you look at the trend, you say, well, it could be a few more, there could be a few less. So, you've got the 30-year trend. Or, if you look at the 10-year trend, it's different. You're still decreasing with 383 babies born in 2020. And that says, as you roll out, 361 is forecast in 2030. That's births. And if I go back, that's 303 forecast. And the trend that I'm using is a 10-year trend. So, that is more sustainable, meaning you're gonna have babies continue to be born in Stokes County for years and years and years as far as we can go. So, with that in mind, let's look at the enrollment forecast. So, the enrollment forecast, the same purple line with trends, you went from the peak enrollment in '99, 2000, that's here. And then, it had some sharp drops right in here. This is a pretty heavy drop in the first 10 years, once the peak classes started moving out. And if you follow that trend out and you say, okay, this is a forecast, everything in the gray is a forecast section. So, this is forecast and it follows along the same 10-year trend if we follow these 10-year trends. Then, we look at the actual district enrollment and it smoothes out. It's not quite, because it has 13 years of students and data. Back here in '74, '75, and we had a little bump in '80 in here, and then it went down a little and then it climbed back up again. And now, it has been falling consistency for 10, 20 years. And the forecast is that it would continue to drop, and that enrollment then takes you right on down. So, what could change these trends? So, you see trends and they're all, and the schools are in a downward trend. The only upward trend was Stokes County general population as they age. What could change it? More or fewer births? Economic development, job opportunities, increased farming, land-based, increased tourism, hospitality, families become larger. The trend now is families are smaller. They don't have 10 kids, most don't have five anymore. Inflow of childbearing age adults, meaning it's the suburban environment and childbearing adults are moving in. And then, you have opportunities identified in the Stokes County 2035 planning document. Now, this document that I'm gonna hold up right here, this is a document produced around 2014, 15. And this goes into a lot of possibilities in Stokes County of growth and where the strengths are in Stokes County and how they work. But this ties, and this is where the aging population came from.
Mr. Powell, just real quickly, that is a county document that was referenced here that he's referencing again. That is one that was not made by us or anything. That was made by the county that he received from them, correct?
Correct. Stokes County Planning. And if you look into the small sections of there for the executive summary, introduction, economic development, recreation, transportation, and infrastructure, all of those are referred to in the booklet. So, if, until trends are affected, meaning what event or events would cause the trend to be affected? And it says, use the trends to forecast the student enrollment. So, in a minute, you're gonna see, we're gonna talk about the peak birth rate in '94, enrolled in kindergarten five years later. And as you go through 13 years, in '12, '13, they're now graduating. So, if you follow this trend, those students, and I'm bringing this together saying the birth rate to the kindergarten and follow it through 12 years. And right now, there's not a trend saying that's gonna change, so the district enrollment will continue to decline unless you get more babies or more move-in. So, the next slide has lots of numbers, and I don't expect you to look at the numbers and read it. In your board packages, you should have a board pack. And this has 12 years of, this has 24 years of information. All of this information was given by Stokes County Schools to me in all areas in the gray, as well as to the births. This is a column of births gathered from state data, and this is the year they're born. And each year transforms five years later into I was enrolled. And the peak kindergarten enrollment happened at the top of this. I did not show this as a downward line to reflect trends. I show this as following a cohort kindergarten through graduation. And in between each year, by using calculations of how many kindergartens moved to first grade, and there's a percentage. Maybe in here, I refer to 101%, 100, 102, 98, 94, 93. So, all of these are percentages that move from this year kindergarten to the next year they're in first grade. That's important because I didn't put that formula in between every one of these all the way out, but it's there. And that forecasts the traditional movement of students from first to second to third. And if you come down to read the chart, this is also the largest eighth-grade class. Above it, they're smaller, they're gradually growing to hit the peak, and since that peak class, now they're decreasing on down. So, in there, the eighth graders go from 613 to 449. That's eighth grade. So, in that 10-year, 12-year period, they decreased. Now, this, I put that gap in there for a reason. This is eighth grade to ninth grade. And traditionally, the whole state, you're not unique, the whole state, eighth grade to ninth grade, you have more ninth graders enrolled. That has generally been attributed to private schools, public schools, religious schools. Once those students get of high school age, they want the whole high school social environment, be it sports, be it PE, be it band, be it theater. They want the socialization. And think about how that a bunch of teenagers, you get them together and they're inseparable. Well, that's what high school environment produces. So, if you think about this number, back in 2000, 16% increase from eighth grade to ninth grade. And you think, wow. That also is a tributor to saying you had move-in population, maybe they had some younger kids, but when they went to high school, they came into your high schools. What's different is 16%. And the next 10 years later, it's 10%. The next 10 years later, which is current, is 5.3% increase from eighth grade to ninth grade students. So, as you can see, the county, it appears to, in my experiences, indicate that you have less move-in with students. And so, now, you've got a lot of students that are here, and this is more percentage-wise what most districts have, it's a traditional increase. Now, if they're growing, you know, the Wake's and the Mac's, they're gonna have a bigger number for move-in population once they go from eighth to ninth. And then, you follow this on out to graduation. This is your peak class. And I look to say, is there any differences, you know, another 12 years later? And you're following generally the same thing, but above that, 458 in eighth grade. You have 452 going up, 435, 475. So, as you go up the page, there are fewer, so which means your enrollment's declining. And from here down, you're going 425, 419, 425, 407, 342. So, your decrease each year is moving downward. So, now, let's say, where are we going? So, let's take, this is the last year of actual, this is 21, 22. 403 kindergartens enrolled. Now, if we took those 403 kindergartens and used the same formulas all the way through, those kindergarteners next year would be in first grade with 415 because the random says you grew by 103% sometimes. Sometimes, you decreased by 95%. So, it's always that plus 3% to 5% in Stokes County from 100%. So, if you follow these kindergarten, the current enrolled kindergarten to eighth grade, you've got about the same amount at 388 students. And then, you have the traditional increase, 5.3%. By using the same last 10 years of data and rolling the 5.3%, you got an increase, 385 to 429. And then, you follow those out as they go out. And you gotta think about the graduation rate and the dropouts and so forth in order to get this, because these numbers are a negative number in all cases as you lose some students going through high school. These students are in school. And the survivorship of every class following the history when you go out, and it is 4,762 students right here. And that is in '32, '33 when they graduate. You are currently at 5,422. So, just following the students that you have through elementary, middle, and high, you're gonna decrease from 5,422 to 4,762. They're in there, it's coming, it's real. So, that 10 to 12-year forecast is not a subjective opinion, that's following the survivorship traditionally through your school system, which is good survivorship, by the way. Once we get into the pink color, this has some forecasting in it. So, these births are real, they haven't entered school yet, but when they enter school, those using the same formulas, you're gonna roll them over. And so, this area is not really as much of a forecast, those children are in Stokes County. And as a whole, within 3% to 5%, they're gonna bounce right at 100% of those babies born will be here. I think that's a tribute to Stokes County Schools in that Stokes County is maintaining to keep the students born in this county, they remain in this county, and they're going to school in this county. You can talk about charters and others, and maybe there's 140 students in a charter school, maybe there's 50 students in a religious school. And those numbers are pretty close to what are forecast at the state of 140, 50 to 140, religious and charters. So, it's not big in relationship to these total enrollment numbers. And it depends by year, whether it's 95% entering school or 103%. That's pretty close, that's just a few students. But this brings you to the forecast. This area in pink is actually forecasting children that have not been conceived yet because they're moving down to say, how many children will be conceived and born in 2031, '32? And this line follows that 10-year trend you just saw of births. It does not follow the 30-year trend, which would be much more drastic. And this brings you to the total 361 down at the bottom that you saw in that trend, 361, there's that number, which is roughly two to three students fewer per year of births downward direction. So, that kinda sets the stage for the next step. The last 20 years, the total enrollment dropped 1,872 students, or 936 in 10 years. Your birth rate declined from 526 to 380. Your enrollment declined, that number matches the 1872. The next 10 years forecasting to drop 620 students in 10 years, not 936, 620 student drop. And then, use the birth trend to say, is it gonna change? And the enrollment in that same 10 years, today's enrollment to the enrollment in 2031. So, knowing that, we forecast how many students would be in Stokes County? So, the next question is, where will they be? And if you trend this, now, I'm gonna spend a second, I'm gonna hit this chart. This was produced by Stokes County GIS Planning. It's very good. It's Stokes County Homes Added. Between 2015 and '21, Stokes County set this parameter, they did this chart, they know where the permits are, they know where the homes are. Darker colors mean more homes were added, lighter colors mean less homes were added. So, if you look, all the darker colors are down in your south and southwest, and your lightest colors are up in your north and northeast. Keep that perspective in mind as we look at the next one, but I'm gonna spend a second talking homes. So, does the addition of homes or apartments directly relate to more enrollment? A lot of different answers, lots of questions. Are they moving from one Stokes County home to another? They may build a new home in the south and west. I say that because that's the largest new home. And if they move from the north and east, because it's the fewest, you didn't change your enrollment. You just moved them from one corner of the county to another corner of the county. So, you didn't grow as a district. Next, are the home buyers new to Stokes County? Next, are the buyers of childbearing age? Do they already have children? If so, what are their ages? And general trends in my experiences, and I've done a lot of these trends, is larger home sale prices have fewer youth. You can kinda put that in, you know, my life lesson and maybe yours, as you start a home and you're newly married and you're childbearing age, you may not have the funds necessary because you're still growing in your salary and in your income. And as you get more income and you get older and you move up the ranks in the income level, then you have a little more money so you can buy a more expensive home. So, traditionally, the larger home prices have fewer youth and are more likely to have older children if so. Typically, they're not starter homes. And some developments take years to build out and some never do. So, the new home buyers increase enrollment. My experience is no. If you're in a huge growing area, then yes. If you go to Wake County, Mecklenburg, Union County, Durham, they're moving into the inner city. So, you've got all of those spaces where they're growing. Guilford, a lot of houses. Forsyth, yeah, it's having houses, but the youth population is kind of neutral. The student population in Forsyth has become more neutral. So, I'm gonna move to the next and talk about, now, this may give you a little bit of insight to say, where will the students of the future be located? So, if we look at the students that are in school, youth five to 17, the darker color is more students, the lighter color is less students. This is a census information, and this was produced by Stokes County Planning Office. So, if you look, the largest student population center is in the south side of the county. And in particular, here's your darkest colors in the south and west. And say, now, let's rub the crystal ball a little bit and let's move to future school ages that are now under five years old. So, these children are born, they're under five. So, where are the darker colors again? So, if you look, here's the darkest again. What this, if you get to looking at the colors, now, look over here. This one has some more color, and there are fewer five-year-olds. So, this area in the under-five-year-old means most likely you'll have fewer students than you do currently. And if you look at this area, your northeast, Sandy Ridge, if you look at the Sandy Ridge, these, by the way, are on school attendance areas. So, Sandy Ridge, Lawsonville, Nancy Reynolds, and so forth across here, Pinnacle, there's three down in the King area, Rural Hall, Pine. So, you get down in these areas. So, what does this tell you? This area that has a little, a little darker than the lightest, now, it gets darker. So, you have more under-five-year-olds, which means this area has the potential to have more students. This doesn't say a lot more. It says some more. Please note that. It says some more, not a lot more. A lot more would move this color into the darker colors. You're not there yet. So, this is, you'll have some more students in the north and east. This area remains the most likely to have under five, and this has your school age. So, this may give you a little insight, if you're rubbing the crystal ball of where are the kids gonna be and not be. You can see this area became lighter. These areas, and there's little subtle looks here, this area became lighter in this area. See, both of these, this is lighter than this, so slight decrease. Notice in here, you have fewer under-five-year-olds in here than you do currently in school. Let's see, that is, give me that section.
Poplar Springs.
Poplar Springs.
Yes.
So, Poplar Springs has fewer under-five-year-olds than the Poplar Springs that are currently in school. Now, I'm gonna relate that and give you the big picture of the county. So, when you look at this and say, where are the students at today? Now, this orange line follows- Now, this orange line follows the elementary, so the southwest corner of your county has fifty percent of your students, southeast corner, thirty-two percent, northern side of the county, eighteen percent of your students. So three-fourths of the county and one-fourth of the county. So if you're looking to where should you have the most amount of schools or the fewest amount of schools, or where are the most amount of students and the fewest amount of students, this map should tell you a little bit. This area has the possibility of growing, but this area has the possibility of shrinking, so I don't see this changing in overall total student. It means maybe they're shifting from here to Sandy Ridge, I don't know that. Maybe they're shifting from Nancy Reynolds to down in this section, I don't know that. Can't get that info without the twenty-twenty census that has not been done. Office of State Budget Management, North Carolina does not have that information.
Is there a projected time when they think they may release it?
They have talked about within the year. But bear in mind, twenty-ten has not given that information yet either, and that's twelve years away.
Okay.
So, great question, by the way. But it probably won't change a lot from where you're at. So if you took all that information and the chart with the declining enrollment, and you followed the existing twenty-twenty-one kindergarten through graduation, you'll get total elementary per high school, I did each of these by high school area, because I can't drill down into the elementary areas. And then we can project high school enrollments in twenty-thirty-one, thirty-two, which is not really a projection. Remember that chart that says all we're doing is following your existing students? So it's not really a projection, it's within three to five percent of the real number. So North Stokes, you go to one ninety-nine, which is down from three hundred. South Stokes, three thirty-six, down from five twenty-eight. West Stokes, six forty-five, down from seven sixty-one. So I'm going to kind of tie you together a little bit. If you look right now, this is in the North Stokes Attendance area. And in North Stokes Attendance area, you have Nancy Reynolds, Lawsonville, Sandy Ridge. And you added the number of kindergartners, and it would be sixty-six in twenty-one, twenty-two. These are the actual first, second, and third grades in blue. But we're going to follow that kindergarten class, and we're going to go to middle school, which is Hanegro, same sixty-six students, plus or minus five percent, right from the previous charts we looked at. And you roll that out, so it goes to two hundred and five total middle school, they have two hundred and thirty-five now. So you see, when the decrease comes, it may not be huge in the north side of the county because you have a lot fewer students, eighteen percent of your students. Then when you take that same sixty-six and you put them in high school in year thirty-one, thirty-two, so this is the thirty-one, thirty-two, ten years from now, same kindergarteners entered high school in the north attendance area. You've got the same students that are now in first, second, and third grade, those are these students. And you've traditionally held the line pretty close, within five percent all the way across the board. And that says, north would have two hundred and sixty students. Then you start to look down, that's in that area, then you're going to go down and look at, okay, you're going to lose four students to Meadowbrook, you're going to lose forty students to Early College, two hundred and sixteen subtotal, then you're going to lose seventeen students for eight percent average graduation decrease. Gets you to one hundred and ninety-nine for North Stokes High School. That's within five percent in my calculations. There's not much forecasting in that number. We're basing it on where we're at. This is South Stokes, same premise, hundred and three if you added Germanton, London, Pine Hall, Walnut Cove. Our students on middle school, you've got three hundred and ninety-five currently in southeastern, so you're going to go to three hundred and twelve. Third are thirty-five, by the way, from your trends that I received from Stokes County data, percent for South Loss, gives you three hundred and numbers, I guess two hundred